We'll call to order the committee in the whole agenda meeting. September 12, 2022. Looks like we do not have any appearances for this meeting. Start out with administrator updates.
I'll just go with the finance director updates. That's our thing.
Thank you. Attorney updates. The pair of attorneys not here this evening. Move on to city clerk and HR updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just added a couple of things to your packet, including the accounts payable register and then a notice of hearing on improvement. The notice of hearing is something that Joe is going to discuss following a feasibility report. It's required that we conduct a public hearing on anything that we're going to possibly assess so that 2023, 2024 Street and Comer Project would fall into that category. We had it listed for September 26th, which would give us the 10 days, but it's required that we would prefer to move it to the October 3rd or October 10th meeting just to give, make sure that our staff has enough time to put those notices together. Does the council have a preference on that? The third would be a special meeting. I know sometimes Joe said that it takes a while to explain the process, you know, the project and so depends on if the council wants to hear that at a regular meeting or if you'd prefer that that happened at a special supper meeting.
I'd be better with a regular meeting. I don't care.
What, the third would be a special meeting if I may. The 10th is Columbus and Dishes Day. Are we going to have city council on that? Do we tip it for you? Do we?
Yes, we do.
We do? Okay.
So where do you want to put it then?
I would rather have it during a regular city council meeting.
On the 10th?
I'd rather have it on the 10th in October.
Six o'clock by noon? Perfect. And then I'm sure Joe will go over this, but the estimated cost on the notice that was in your packet was estimated at 12.5 million and it looks like it's been changed to 11. So I can explain that further. As far as your agenda goes, the only thing that I have different is that Ben is going to present his committee appointments for those vacancies that occurred with the absence of the mayor. So he'll do that right before committee reports on the agenda. And then under consent agenda, item number 15 is the renewal of applicants, applications for liquor licenses. There's a couple that came in late this afternoon, so I want to make those pending the approval of the chief of police and receive appropriate documentation. Now I have no, nothing further.
All right. Move on to finance director updates.
Thank you, Council President. I would just go through some of the items on the consent agenda, which is item number nine, which is that the liquor store ad hoc committee is requesting that DSGW does the architectural services for the liquor store project. We did interviews, we had three interviews and the committee came back with the recommendation for DSGW. So I think everybody is really excited to move forward with this project. It's been a long time coming, so it'll be exciting times. And then number 10 is closing the account. We have designated who is authorized to sign for the closing of a THDF account. So at our previous meeting, we had decided to cut our relationship with the Two Harbors Development Fund. We have an account with the Two Harbors Federal Credit Union and this is just having a resolution authorizing myself to close that and then we'll be in the future transferring those funds to the Two Harbors Development Fund. Does anybody have any questions on that? And then just to point out that I know Patty said that that project is 11 million, but just so you know that that is a total between the city and Lake County, so I don't want anybody to get high as over 11 million dollars. Although the city's portion is, you know, probably around 7 million, like 6.8, but it is a two-year project and why that's so high is mostly because of the, there's a lot of utilities under Fifth Street, so. And then finance has been really busy doing the 2023 budget. At the August 26th meeting, we will have our, setting that preliminary tax levy. And so this can be the highest that we can set the levy. So after that, it can go down when we establish that and have our truth in taxation meeting in December and then, but it can't go, we can't increase it after that. So that presentation will be next week, or I mean the next meeting, sorry, on the 26th. Does anybody have any questions? That's all I have.
That's all? Great. City engineer updates.
Good evening, council. Several things on the agenda tonight. First, we'll start off with consent agenda. Excuse me. Actually, communications number four, which is our monthly, our monthly project update. That's in your packet, does a memo. It actually came after your packet, but it came out Friday afternoon, shortly after your packet did. So you should have all gotten the memo, has the 14 projects that we're currently working on for the city. Just hitting highlights on a couple of them. Project number three, the 2021-2022 street project. That one, we're done with just a handful of punch list items, probably most notably, which is the turf on Fifth Avenue, which we're working with the contractor to try and get that, the weeds eliminated and get that turf up to the same standards as it was in the other streets. However, we do have all the information we need essentially to calculate the final costs and do the final assessments. So we're in the process of pulling that together and we'll be targeting to have a public hearing for those assessments. I'll have to work with the clerk to coordinate that date, but because we've got that then certified to Lake County by, I can't remember the exact date in November, so probably be looking to have that, either the second meeting, my told her, or the first meeting in November. One of those two council meetings. As far as then projects number four and five, which are the county's project and our project for the 2023-2024. So Fifth Street and our city avenues. As the clerk and the finance director mentioned, I've got a separate update that I'll go over in more detail with feasibility report, but it is a large project primarily because the county has added or potentially adding three blocks of Fourth Avenue onto the project. Remember originally their project was just going to be Fifth Street from Fourth to Seventh Avenue, those three blocks. Now they're looking at adding, you know, the three blocks of Fourth Avenue from Third Street to Sixth Street, which essentially doubles their size of the project. And we have utilities on every block. So we have sewer and water on all the east west avenues and we've got two water mains on Fifth Street. So when you hear about the dollars, yes, you have to keep in mind that it's primarily, the majority of the dollars is going to be utility dollars on the city's portion of the project because we have city utilities under every block of the project. We did have a meeting last week with county staff, just coordinating schedules and cost estimates and those types of things, so everything's on track. They're considering the Fourth Avenue blocks, whether or not to officially add them to the project at their board meeting on the 27th of September, which is another factor why the clerk and I had talked about maybe pushing our public hearing back later than the 26th makes sense. So as of the 27th, we should know officially whether they want to move forward with Fourth Avenue or not as part of the project. That's about it for the updates on that project. I'll get into more details with the feasibility report as a separate item. Wastewater Treatment Facility, item number seven. Jenny also has a separate memo in your packet, but they've been working away primarily on the big tank, which you've probably all seen down there. So doing a lot of work on that. She included some photographs in her update memo for you showing some of the construction. And there'll be a pay request in your packet under the consent agenda for, well, as payment to the contractor on the wastewater treatment project. And then just a couple of other catch-up items. MINDOT, their project for Trunk Highway 61. The most active thing for the city right now was the potential underpasses. We had gotten preliminary layouts of them in MINDOT by the end of August, so they can start to work that into their environmental documentation, the footprint of the project, the potential footprint. Now we're working on the cost estimates. I just got the last piece of information we need today, so we should be able to have those cost estimates done and out to MINDOT, I would think, by the end of this week. And then that should be everything that we were tasked to do at this point. And getting the cost estimates from MINDOT is a good thing because as they start to pursue funding, they said they will include the underpasses in the funding requests and their funding pursuits. So we can pursue our own funding for it, but they'll also be looking to promote it as well as part of the project. Odegaard Trail, you probably saw it was an invoice from us for service in the Odegaard Trail. That was for the topographic survey that would be necessary to do the design. That's all that had been authorized by the council up to this point. We'll be bringing a proposal for authorization to do the actual design of Odegaard Trail yet this fall. The intent is still to coordinate it with the county's project next year for resurfacing Eighth Street. So looking to consolidate and get better bids by making it a larger project, so. So what you've seen so far is just the topographic survey, if we do the data collection we need for the design, now we'll be coming with authorization, requesting authorization to do the actual design itself. And then finally, the parcel between the water and wastewater treatment facilities. You guys have authorized the preliminary, what we call the research or the data collection tasks, so wetland delineations, environmental assessment, soil borings and survey. So all that stuff's been started. It's all in various stages of scheduling. It should all be done by probably the third week of October. So the wetland delineations, I think, were out there last week. The Phase One environmental assessment started last week. That'll take about three weeks to complete. Soil borings, I think, are scheduled for first or second week of October. Our survey, I believe, is going to be out there next week, so it's all in progress and should all be done by yet. So that's the highlights of the monthly update memo. Any questions on any of the projects, either the ones I mentioned or the other ones in the memo?
Just for me, that parcel between the water and the wastewater plant, as far as everybody being lined up to do that, is the archaeological thing happening in the same period or?
Yep. Yeah, she'll be in, she wants to know what the soil borings find so that she knows that she's got to be prepared, you know, for anything she's going to encounter when she digs her test holes, looking for the archaeological data. So she'll probably be the last piece. I think she's got it on the schedule number like October 15th or.
Any other questions for Joe?
One other thing I could mention, the item in your packet to select DSGW as the architects, we are teaming with them on that project, so we would be doing the civil engineering. We've got the survey, I'd already given my surveyor a heads up that in case the project happened, it would need to get surveyed right away this fall. So he's already got it, he's scheduled to be out there next Monday to do the topographic survey of the site so we get all the data we need. Wetland delineations, they'll get out there yet this fall and get the site surveyed too and then we'll have to coordinate soil borings. I'm hoping that the week they come out to drill the parcel between the plants, I can get them to swing over and drill the liquor store too. So we want to get all that information collected now, we've got decent conditions, so that we can be working on that design over the winter because I, my understanding is the schedule is to bid that so it can be rolled around come next June roughly. So that's just a brief update, a preview, I guess, on the liquor store project.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, then, following up on the wastewater treatment facility, there is consent agenda item number seven in your packet, which is the payment to Lakewood contractors for pay application number 10, and that's an amount of $1,517,898.04. So that's up for your consideration in the consent agenda. Any questions on the pay request for the wastewater treatment facility project?
What percentage would you say that along in the project of being finished?
That's a good question. Oh, yeah, our cover letter states, "The work reflected in this pay request represents 24.0% of the work to be completed." So roughly a quarter of the way along. Remember that was identified, that was going to be a three, three-year project, taking three construction seasons. So we're still in construction season number one, so quarter of the way through, getting toward ten season number one, so we're right about on track.
And they can work on that project throughout the winter as well?
Yeah, yeah, there'll be certain aspects of it they can do, like interior work and such. Any other questions related to the wastewater treatment facility? Okay. Then the other item that I have on the agenda, which is new business number one, which is receiving the feasibility report for the 23-24 street project and calling the public hearing. And as you know, this is a 429 process, chapter 429 Minnesota statutes, which allows you to use assessments towards financing the project. And so it's got a number of requirements. One of the requirements is to do a feasibility report that answers the basic questions of what's being done, what will it cost and how is it financed? And then you have to officially receive that report and hold a public hearing on it. So you can explain it to the public before you then decide whether you officially want to order the project where we do the detailed plans and design. So Minnesota law requires that when you receive the report, you have to publish a notice in your official city newspaper and it's got to be published at least twice and at least 10 days before your hearing. That we could do, like we discussed, we could submit it tomorrow, it could be published on Friday, which would let us have our meeting, our public hearing at the next meeting, 26. But the other thing is you have to also mail notice to anybody that's in the project area that potentially could get assessed. And they have to receive that notice 10 days in advance of the public hearing as well. And that's the more challenging piece because with the additions of the Fourth Avenue blocks in our report, essentially the mailing area has increased by about 50 or 60% over the original mailing area. So to get all the mailers ready and get them envelope stuffed and get that out, I think it just gives staff more of a comfort level to push the, the public hearing back a little ways. And as we mentioned, Lake County is, their board meeting on the 27th of September is one more reason why it makes some sense for us. And from our perspective on engineering side, we can make it work whatever date, we could hold it, I guess, the bottom line is the earliest it could be would be the 26th if you really wanted to have it that day, but otherwise, anytime after that is fine. And my understanding of the discussion is we'll look at the regular meeting on October 10th for that public hearing. So we will be ready to present it that night. In your packet is a memo that I put together. I don't have the actual report in there, but I, because it's far too big to put in your packet, but I just put a kind of overview memo in there. So project area, I think you're all familiar, Fifth Street from Fourth to Seventh Avenues, Fourth Street, excuse me, Fourth Avenue from Third Street to Sixth Street, Fifth Avenue from Fifth Street to Sixth Street, Sixth Avenue from Fourth Street to Seventh Street. So a little bit of a varying limits depending on what avenue you're working on. The estimated project costs, right now, the city portion of the project for all the utilities that the city has to do over all the blocks, plus the street work on the city avenues, is estimated at 600, or 6, excuse me, $6,587,000, so about 6.6 million. We do have some optional improvements identified, a total of about $260,000. Most expensive of those, we're recommending, which would be water main open on Fourth Street. We think it makes more sense to wait and do that if and when Fourth Street is reconstructed. So total city portion that we're presenting in the report that we've actually investigated is 6.85 million, which is the base work of 6.6 plus those options of 260,000. County's portion right now is, well, it was estimated about 5.5 million as of last week. That was their planning level estimate, but since we had our meeting last Thursday, they went back in and fine tuned their estimates and reworked some things and they came up with a revised estimate today where they've brought their cost down to about 4.6 million. So right now, our total and their total is right about 11 million for the overall project. Seems like a lot. It is a lot. It's a very large project when you think about the first couple of street projects we had in the city. We did look at a comparison of where we're at right now with the report estimates to the CIP and we are tracking about 5% under the CIP estimates, which is what we want to do, right? We want, when we do the first planning level estimates, we hope those are the most conservative and then when we do the report, we hope the costs come down and then when we take the bids, or we do the final design, cost them down again, take the bids, cost them down again, and when you construct it, the construction comes in under contract. So, you know, we like to see the cost step down every step of the way. That means you're budgeting enough and, you know, you're planning, you have the right plan, so you're not surprised with costs going up as the project goes along. So this first check from what we had put in the CIP that was approved last December to the estimates we have in the report that are in your packet, the costs have come down about 5%. So it's a good indication. So we are set at this point, I mean, I included the cost, the appendix with cost estimates, appendix B1 and B1A, and I also included a large chart that breaks down segment by segment what the current report estimate is to the CIP estimate. And so you can see segment by segment, which is currently estimated higher or lower and then overall how it came in at 5.8% under the CIP estimates. So we can get into more detail if you want, but that's kind of a generic overview and obviously we're getting, we'll be getting a lot more detail when we have the public hearing on October 10th. So I'll stop there and see if you have any questions. If there are no questions on the content of my memo or the cost estimates at this point, the official action we're requesting is there is a resolution that's in your packet. The resolution essentially, well, it, you accept the report, so you're not approving it, you're just recognizing that it's being delivered to you, so you're accepting it. And based on that report, then you're calling for the public hearing. And in the resolution, you specify the date and time that you call a public hearing so that staff has the information they need to publish in a newspaper and to mail the notices appropriately. So that's the official action would be to adopt that resolution if you're ready to receive the report and to call the public hearing. And again, so you're not approving anything tonight, you're not authorizing the next step of the work, that would come after the public hearing.
And that would be when we receive the full feasibility.
Correct. Yep, that's when we'll have the hard copies of a whole hundred plus pages of feasibility report. Any questions on the process for the content or the status of the project?
I don't think so.
All right. Things are on track, so that's good. It's a, it's a large project, it really, it certainly is, but it'd be a lot of infrastructure that will get approved in the course of this project as well, so.
Awesome.
Very good.
Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome.
All right, up next I have a discussion regarding conducting primary elections.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I didn't include anything else in your packets because we talked, we had this on the agenda at the last meeting and you could have all the information. And I didn't get any questions from anybody, so I just kind of wanted to reach out and see how everybody's feeling about that, if they, if they're getting any input from voters or their constituents regarding, you know, if you guys have a preference, how, what you'd like you to be looking into or that kind of thing.
Does anybody have anything that they'd like to discuss? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, thank you. You know, I read over a lot of the information that's been presented to us and I think it's almost imperative that we call for a primary election. I think under the circumstances that we're situated in, I think it's important that our constituents have the opportunity to hope for the top two after the primaries. So that's what I have to be kind of.
Should I say something, Derek?
Yeah. And there is a comment from a constituent that they support ranked choice voting, which would allow for one election and would allow for selecting out of the top two, which is a way of eliminating, let's call them random votes for the, who isn't in the top three. My question for the clerk is, is the voting machine that we have available set up for such type of election?
That's one thing that I didn't look into and I should have, but I would think that it is because it's pretty modern. However, I think that the educational part of ranked choice voting is, would take, I think it would take a substantial amount of education to get people to understand that this election, we're going to do ranked choice voting, this one, we're not. But again, this is a council decision and I, you know, honestly, I'm certain that we could make things work for both.
Miles?
What, if we only get two candidates for the, I mean, in the last general election, there was none, there was one. Does that exclude the primary and then we don't need a primary?
I'm just saying, what if, if we only get a couple candidates?
Seems like Patty is acknowledging that.
Yep. If, if there's not more than two candidates, then we don't need to have a primary and then the council would just elect not to have a primary.
And just to refresh my memory, so we're not going to have one till what, at March or April, if we do have a primary? Because you have to wait?
The first election after the November, the first election date that we could have one would be in February. And then after that, the next one is in April. So if we had to have a primary, it would be conducted in April. If we didn't, it would be conducted in February.
The, the regular voting for the mayor, if we don't need a primary, would it happen in February?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
So if we decided to have a primary and there were only two candidates that enrolled, then the council can just elect not to have a general election and the primary would suffice as it would?
No, no, you would not have a primary.
Oh, you wouldn't have a primary?
Yep.
Just vote.
The council would just elect not to have a primary because it's not necessary.
But we would vote.
So before the primary election, the council would opt not to have a primary and then that would be considered the general election?
Correct.
In February.
And that's what happens every other year with how we do it in every other office, typically. We've got it set up where we are, or this is what we have been doing, is that we have been conducting elections, our primaries, only if there's more than two candidates.
That's what I thought.
The, the question is that the city attorney's opinion is that we should probably clarify that moving forward. I mean, it doesn't matter if you do it for this election or after this election because the actual resolution where this was originally adopted in 2012 stated, for the year 2012, we will have a primary. But there was also apparently some legislation at that time that said, if you're currently conducting a primary, you are to continue conducting a primary until you elect not to conduct a primary. So it's a bit confusing there and the attorney just suggested that we put some clarification out there so that in the future, it's very clear. But, but again, you know, right now, we need to concern ourselves with this, this election is my opinion.
Well, in my opinion, it seems like if that's the way that we've been running our elections this entire time, we should stay status quo with that and conduct it as a primary unless we opt not to have a primary and then ask the city attorney for, be a clarification in the way that we have that stated. Is anybody else?
Yeah, I just, what is the timeframe for people after the general election in November? How long do they have to sign up?
To file, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, to file.
I think it's like 98 days before the election, but I've got a, I've got a look at that, but there's a.
So you have December, January, February, right? So it wouldn't be till March? If you, if you had 97 days?
I wish I had it with me, I'm sorry, I don't, but.
Well.
There's enough time, we've determined that there is enough time to have.
The election is at the beginning of November, so all in all, I thought the way that it was discussed and what I had heard is that it would be around February 14. was discussed and what I had heard is that it would be around February 14th, who would be able to have a primary.
The election day is specified already by statute.
That's right, yep.
And so we determined that we had enough.
Five days prior to that. Vines have to open 98 days prior to that.
That's what it is.
Yep, so that's why we couldn't, we couldn't conduct it in November. If, if we were putting a ballot out, or a, I mean, a question, like a ballot question out there, we would have had enough time to get it in November, but since we have this filing period, that's, that's what's longer than, than what would have been required to go from November.
Okay.
And we don't have to make a decision today, it's not on the agenda, but I want to keep this thought process going, because I want to get action done, so that we can get our calendar marked out, and we know what the timeframe is, and we can, you know, spread the word and, and get it settled, because I think it's, you know, it's not something you want to leave to the last minute on.
Sure. Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess I have to agree with the president on the primary. I'm not familiar with ranked choice voting at all myself, so I'm going to have to research that more, but I guess I'm more in favor of keeping a primary election too if necessary.
I think that, for lack of a better term, there's two birds with one stone, if you say that that's the process that we've been going with, we should just stay status quo with that, I think.
I think.
Do you have something else?
Yeah, I would really support having one election if possible, and if there were, even if there were five candidates, you'd want about 50%. I would prefer to have that be sufficient, because as long as they get a majority, they're going to win whether it's a primary or a general election. Whereas if we had a, if that nobody gets a majority, there could be runoff between the top two.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Robin.
So Derek, are you saying that you want to do the ranked file voting, or you don't want to do the primary? I guess I'm a little confused of what you're trying to say.
I would prefer to have an election, if some, any one member gets a majority, they win the election. If they don't get the majority, there would be a runoff between the top two, so then it would be a second election at that point. It's not necessarily a primary, only that it is a, it would be set up for a runoff election so that a majority, everybody would have, kept to have a majority to vote to be elected.
I still wonder, that's what the primary election is, the top, bring it down to the top two?
Well, no, the primary election just brings it down to the top two, and then they're automatically having an election of those two.
Right.
So if you had an election and one person got 98% of the vote, and one got 2%, and one got 1%, well, then that'd up, but then you're still running off, running the election just for a known candidate, because they already have over 50% support.
I would argue that, like, a lot of the time, it's a lot closer, like, say, in my primary election, I mean, there was eight different, you know what I mean? I think it can make a bigger difference. I mean, yeah, 98% of the blowout, I agree with that, but I think it's usually, I think those numbers may shift, you know, in it, from the primary to a general election, it can be quite a bit different. And I think that's, that's why I'm along the lines of a primary, because I think it puts the best two candidates, and then, because some votes change once, once you have the top two candidates, there's all those votes that were for other people that are going to be filtered into those two. That's why I'm, that's why I prefer the primary. Are you saying if there's a blowout, if there was, if somebody got 75% in the primary?
I'm just saying that primary does not necessarily elicit voter turnout, whereas an election does. And so if you have a primary, you're probably going to get less than the turnout that you really want, but if you had it, and this is the election, it will be the final result, then you get competition. If there's only two people running, or three people running, like, I don't know what the primaries were in your, but did the top voter, top primary candidate get over 50%?
Yep, I believe so. Or in all 40 something.
Well, then it'd be a runoff.
The democratic process, to me, it seems like even if you're sitting at like roughly 50%, that's part of campaigning, that, that brings the campaign, try and get those, those votes, and to get people to see what you're trying to produce for them. I'm, I love the understanding that the way that we currently do it now, if we only get two candidates, we're not going to have a primary, we go to not have a primary, and that would be a general election. So that's where I'm at, which typical, you know, for mayor, narrow candidacy, we're looking at usually two candidates, so I'm thinking the odds are fairly good to just largely with that, not even do a primary, and then opt not to, if we only have the two candidates that signed up, to run. Anybody else? All right. Are there any other agenda questions or additions? If not, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.